I think we're gonna... Have you got approval of the minutes in order? What can't we do? Approve of the minutes next time for last.
You know, since 1958, you have been doing them first.
No, no, I'm getting out. The rest of the... I don't know what's here. We have approved of minutes of the last meeting, which was...
Correct. There is a quorum.
Yeah, okay.
You can approve them. Otherwise, next week, you'll be like, "Why don't I get two to sign?"
Yeah. Okay. Did we get... Did you send the minutes?
Ah, they're in the book.
They're in the book. Yeah. See, I haven't even looked at it.
Fall by the wayside there. If the chair decides to put it off for a week, you can... The chair can...
You read the minutes? For last meeting? Well, I just collected them.
Why does that... Sign them?
I did the same thing.
So now you're like, "Proceed."
Let's put all my faith in Martha. She always makes good things.
Okay.
We have approved of that. If we have a problem later, we'll fix it.
Do you want a motion?
Yes. Making motion to approve minutes from... What was updated on 15th? April 13th?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Okay.
Second.
Everybody's in agreement. Okay, that's approved. All right. So the next thing is, so we have three renewals for liquor license from...
You should just do public comments. Anybody have any public comments?
Oh.
But legally, I think that needs to be...
Does anybody have a comment? Something they want to bring up? Public?
Well, I just wanted to talk about the roads, but that's coming up, right?
Yes, we're gonna...
Destroy that part of it's coming up.
I mean, I'm really talking about roads in general, but is yours related to the floods and the...
No, we're just wondering about when, you know, we're going to be able to use the road to get... We're trying to build and so... Trying to get trucks up there and stuff. So we're just curious as to what the timeframe is. That kind of thing.
Okay. We can do it right now. What...
On Denzmore Hill Road. And your name is Michelle Robert.
So how far up Denzmore Hill are you building?
Uh, we're just right by Gary Tractors or right in the...
Yeah. Dave, can you explain what's...
Yep, I believe Michelle left a message on my machine today and my understanding is that Bill may have spoken to them...
Right.
This morning or yesterday. Uh, the roads are still posted at this point in time.
I understand that.
And with all the activity and rainstorms that we have, Denzmore Hill, you know, we just built... Re- Jennyville, Denzmore Hill is still washed out. So I think that, I don't know if Bill gave you...
He did.
Said to call back?
He said to check back next week, but I mean, it's like, I don't know. I'm just trying to figure out totalize what we can expect or...
So the roads are posted until May 15th, you know? And if it dries out or becomes suitable before the 15th, we pull the postings down and let the trucks get through. I think that prior to this, you had either talked to Bill and gained some permission to get in early morning?
Right.
You know, but with the weather and the roads as they are, it's just not... You know, it's across the board. We're just not allowing heavy trucks to get in and out of there until we can get roads to a more suitable place.
Okay. Well, yeah, I mean, it's just kind of vague and I didn't know if they had some plans as to when they were planning on grading and that kind of stuff. Because it's really actually, you know, it's not like mud, but it does need grading. So I just didn't know if there was a timeframe or a schedule or whatever. I mean, we've got people that are waiting on us and we can let them know, you know?
So that does get to some of the storm activity. Actually, Denzmore Hill is not the worst of the crew. We're presently in the midst of... We got Advent Hill is pretty bad, as is Town Farm Road. You know, we've got an extensive amount of damage that we need to take care of. You know, we will get to... You know, we're essentially working through the priorities and we'll get to Denzmore when some of the other ones, you know, that a car can actually fall into. You know, we get those kind of filled up and get those kind of going. So I would, you know, is simply, you know, the postings are seasonal and they're not always cut and dry. And we try and, you know, pull the posting as soon as we feel as though it's feasible. You were able to get some trucks in there.
Right.
Some of those did go in the afternoon and, you know, did some damage to the roads.
Well, actually, they didn't really do any damage to the roads.
Well...
Yeah, I'm not...
So imagine, yeah, I know, but just imagine, you know, cement trucks doing that townwide. That's an issue for us, so...
No, I understand.
You know, I think Bill tried his best to alleviate that and get you in and out of there. And at this point in time, I think you just need to... I think, you know, I would give us into, you know, next week before you give Bill a call back and see how things are progressing.
All right. It doesn't look like it's going below freezing now. Any more temperatures. You know, you do understand the early morning idea is the road's frozen?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Where we are not going to have any...
Right. Well, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, it ran into the afternoon only because there was, you know, a few trucks that came in and by the time they, you know, did and then left, so... I had called and left a message and he didn't call me back. And when he did, it was later in the morning. And so the trucks were already out of the way because what you order concrete, you know? You can't like just not have them come. So we didn't hear from them, so we just thought that we were okay. It wasn't. So I apologize to him, you know? I'm sorry that that happened. And we don't get very good phone service up there. So he called on my cellphone and I don't know, he probably didn't have my house number. So it was just a combination of miscommunication between both of us, so... But I'm not here to cause a problem. I'm just here to try to figure out what, where we can move because we have people that are, you know, asking us, that are working for us. And they're like chomping at the bit to get going because they have been working all winter, so...
We'll do the best that we can. I mean, we just got Jennyville open last Wednesday, so...
Yeah, no, I know.
It's kind of touching to hope, so...
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. So we move on to the liquor. So we've got three renewals for liquor license and the Bee Gees Market, Alcohol Tavern, and it's now Jake's, which used to be Mike's.
Is it Jake's Market? Or just Jake's?
I don't know what the name is. Let you look. This is the tavern.
Well, it says here Jake's Market.
Yes. This is... This looks different. I guess it's a different kind of...
But it says doing business is Mike's Store and Collectibles, so I think they're going to keep the name, right?
Yeah. It says Jake's Market Doing Business has... Can't be a Jake's Market TVA.
I know. Very cute.
Yeah. Okay. So are we all good with renewing these licenses? Yes, there's nice things. Okay, so we got that in the minutes. We approved that and we will sign them. We can do that right now, I guess.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good.
During the last...
No, see, was this the Jake's one?
Yeah.
I saw it. Oh, you're missing a sheet. Fill off the back. Do you... It was here a minute ago. Yep, there it is, I'm sorry. Stapled right here. Oh, okay. I'm not going to do that.
So Dave, I guess that's under control. We can talk about it.
So this is a little bit of an update and steps we're looking to take going forward. So here's some pictures. It's not all the pictures, but some of the main damage that we sustained. We sustained some pretty significant damage on Jennyville Road, a little bit on Best, Jenny Road, on Denzmore Hill Road. We had some, we had a culvert issue on Denzmore Hill. Town Farm Road, Advent got hit particularly good. There's bits and pieces on, say Brothers, on Weed. Pretty big setback. We also had on Advent, coming down towards Brothers, there are three culverts that failed there. Took out kind of the bank as you're coming around from... There's a kind of a new house at the top of... As you're coming from Brothers up Advent, kind of come up a hill. And that bank has kind of been washed out. There's a little bit of a picture there. Three culverts there are... Were plugged and weren't working. We're going to look to replace those. Two more on Advent as you get towards the Animal Farm and down towards a house that's got... Or towards the house that has the Miller kind of... Back end of a tractor trailer truck is the Miller truck there. Another culvert there. There's a culvert up on Hartman Hill that went... And there's two significant culverts that we're going to look to mitigate sooner rather than later. There's a culvert on Jennyville that just simply, I think this one has been an issue to us in the past. And there is a culvert on Mace Hill Road that is paved road and that is beat up in pretty rough shape. So we're looking to hope to kind of swap those, the Jennyville one and the Mace Hill one as kind of a mitigation effort. Whether that money comes through perhaps some FEMA money or whether it comes through the state of Vermont. But we need to address them because particularly the one on Jennyville was kind of the cause of the washout on Jennyville.
What was the other Jennyville one?
Mace Hill Road, just up from the Four Corners intersection there.
Did you have any problem with that storm?
Uh, it backed up. It almost... There's a woman, so there's a White House on the corner. A woman next to the White House down upstream from that. It didn't go into her house, but it went up to like where a generator is.
Your house is kind of low.
Yeah.
Talking about... Flat on Route 12.
Yeah.
Yeah, that culvert is on the list for a long, long time. And it's one of the problems with changing it. It's antique. It's only about kind of picking up with that.
Well, it's gonna... Car's going to go off of it pretty soon. I mean, it's now has, you know, there's failure over the head wall and the concrete started to cave in there. So it's low and it needs to be wide.
It's a project.
It is, yeah.
Well, I don't even know what... I need to plan for it all as it had to get hopefully some aid.
State of Vermont was looking at it today with Bill and I, both District 4 Garage and the stream alteration person. Again, if it's, you know, FEMA has mitigation money, if it's not part of the FEMA mitigation money, it'll be part of the state structures grant. It's pretty well.
One of the issues about that...
It's pretty toast.
The issues on that one was when they posted the road signs that are right up here.
Yeah.
That was going to be the detour.
It is. Or seems to be. Not sure why we don't have a posting out on our road, but... Because our culvert is not stronger than their culvert.
No. No, they're as strong.
Bypass.
Yeah. That doesn't make any sense at all. According to my phone, there's a 105. No, this is a culvert in Four Corners, the first.
Yes.
Right. Just as you had at Mace Hill, it's right there. Okay, in the village. The signs are out front here that says the bridge is posted. It's the bridge in Fieldsville. And they're also on the other end saying, "No trucks over..." It's the lane. I forgot. I don't remember the line.
It's actually fairly light load.
It wouldn't allow the town to even carry it. What was the saying? I don't think. If you had strictly to it, am I right or wrong?
I'm not entirely sure about that. Doesn't seem to affect West Windsor, but they seem to run their trucks over all they want.
Everybody seems to ignore the posting signs. If the detour would be over this culvert and around on the...
Well...
Mace Hill.
It shouldn't be because our road has a weight... That road has a weight limit.
I know.
On it. I'm not sure if there's a posting sign on... On, what's the one coming from? The horseshoe there?
Bowers.
Bowers.
So it didn't make any sense, apart from when they put the signs up. It still doesn't. Only your problems with just above that Bowers on Lover's Lane. Yeah, Mike Johnson, that's who we talked about.
Phil, that's minor. I gotta tell you. I gotta tell you. It's pretty low on the list.
But from a detour perspective, it was... In good shape there.
Well, that's kind of the way they, some of them go. And so this culvert is seeing some traffic that it shouldn't be, which is, which does help compound the problem. So for those that decided to do that. So anyway, the larger picture here, you know, the two culverts, you know, we'll have to see how this goes. They need to do a hydrology study on it to determine, you know, the sizing of it. They need to kind of look at the flow of the water and kind of...
Who's this FEMA person?
Uh, no, it was Michael Blakesley from District 4, from my agency of transportation, District 4. And it was Scott Jensen, State of Vermont Stream Alterations Permit. Stream alterations.
Official?
Sure. So it needs to, you know, they need to do a hydrology study and we'll determine kind of the best way to move forward with that. But both of those are kind of... The other one may have a little bit of old fashioned aspects to it as well, but, you know, completely caused Jennyville to wash out.
Old fashioned, is it the stone or concrete?
Parts of it are stone.
Yeah.
Both of them.
It's been a problem for quite a while. And it's all of Katy Brook, isn't it, coming down?
Uh, yep.
And it has to go under the road to get to it.
So the culvert itself is undersized. You know, again, we were looking at it today and it was like maybe that much space in between the water and the culvert. But just the angle of it as well, I mean, the water just jumped, you know, just jumped the bank and went right down the road. That was kind of a problem.
Right down the road, you'd have to go to get, find a way out. A long ways to go.
Uh, well, it, so it jumped, you know, so the culvert, so Katy Brook kind of comes down behind Godette's house.
Yeah.
There, the trailer, right? And then kind of comes underneath Jennyville. So right here, this corner is where it jumped and then it just flowed this way and took out 100 yards of road.
Yeah.
You know, 150 yards of road.
Finally go across the road?
Um, it did make its way partially across the road. Pretty well, yeah. It went down. One of those pictures there is it going right down the road, so...
Now, you mentioned three other culverts failing. Not where we were on Advent Hill?
Yep.
Did they fail or were they not cleaned out?
They were undersized at 15 inches and they were plugged and they basically jumped.
That's a really steep slope there where the culverts were crossing on the event. So that water had to be really ripped in.
So every time you take out a culvert, you have to put one back that's the new standard, right?
We, at a minimum, you know, so all the culverts that we've taken out, we've done for a reason and that's essentially upsize it. So those three on Advent will get upsized. The two farther down Advent will get upsized. The two, the one on Jennyville and the one on Mace Hill would get upsized. They're all going to get upsized.
When it happens. Right? I mean, it's not up to the town of Heartland to say, "Well, we're just going to put it back in what we had there."
Well, we could if we wanted to, but...
Can you? I mean, it would be foolish.
Well, the three on Advent, we can't because they're 15 inch. So they should be a minimum of 18 inches, the state standard. So we've signed the state standards to say that we will do that. I mean, it would be silly for us to stick, you know, maybe an 18 inch that we put in there. I can't remember what Scott said, but, you know, a couple of the other ones farther down Advent got upsized to 24, I think.
So they'll tell you?
Yep, they tell us. Yep. And so he also makes a determination. So if it's a stream such as the one on Jennyville, Katy Brook, or I'm not sure what's the one is that flows next along Route 12 there. The Mace Hill one.
I'll remember. Yeah, I don't know what it's called.
Those, we need a specific permit to, you know, is a little bit more technical and they'll do a hydrology study and they'll determine the size of it. The other ones are more of a seasonal issue and he kind of eyeballs them and gives a recommendation on what it should be upsized to. So... But the five that we did on Heartland Hill last year, all got, we upsized all of those when we did that one. You know, we had problems there. Still had a little bit of a problem this time. But the culverts acted like they should. But we upsized all five of those when we did that, so...
You know, I'm thinking about another time that there's a stone header on the culvert on Weed Road that's coming out. It's right near Flower Lane and there. I should tell Bill that, like, I'm a little bit...
Okay. But so from a larger picture, those are some and we'll need to... The one up on Heartland Hill, Gordon, is kind of a temporary one until we get up there. It's kind of long and interferes with a driveway culvert that's up there. But we'll end up re-gigging that and putting that in a little bit better. It was kind of a...
You dug it up?
Yeah.
And I see they found it. He said, "Well, if we find a culvert, it's a little bit bigger, we can slip it over the end and put it back together." That's obviously what they did. So it's this one?
Yeah. That one, the others, there's still the... On the intake on that one, it's still the junky part of it, so we'll kind of deal with that. But the bigger story here is, obviously, this is a setback for the town. Interferes with our spring grading. Just about anything else, spring couldn't have come at a worse time. So we've got a couple, we're looking at a couple of options here. You know, we could have gone or can go two ways. I think we've determined one way to go. And that is, so we can... And every town's different. Every town's kind of grappling with this. But we can try and look to bring in subcontractors to do this work and kind of concentrate on what we're doing for normal spring cleanup. However, we need to follow the procurement policy, whether it's our own or the federal procurement policy. You know, that's a minimum of five weeks, I think. You know, by the time we write an RFP, advertise it, accept somebody, then they'd have to be able to come in here and the timing that they have to come in here. Or we can do the work ourselves and maybe bring somebody else in to do some of this spring stuff. We are kind of looking to really do most of it ourself and perhaps lease some equipment. One piece of equipment that we lease would be via FEMA, would be part of the FEMA project. And the other one would be to bring in a second grader so that we can swap one person, probably skip over to a grader and do the town roads. Then we would keep one grader and do the cleanup that we need to do on the runoff and that kind of stuff. Because we would pull, skip over, it kind of leaves us short a driver. We haven't quite figured that out. We haven't talked to him, but John Dumas could be a potential, you know, to simply subcontract him and put him in the truck and have him haul the material.
You say license?
My understanding is that he is. But again, we don't have all the pieces together here. However, that would keep us moving. They're already doing a lot of the work. We're already moving forward. Five weeks from now, we could potentially be done. It's really, you know, the other part of this that's lagging, you know? And if we are doing it, you know, the other stuff is sitting there. So I think that this is kind of a good middle of the roadway to go. Again, so what we'd be looking to do is bring in a grader to do the town roads while we concentrate on the storm stuff. And an excavator to do a lot of the culvert work. Believe the excavator would be covered under the FEMA stuff.
With or without an operator?
The operator would come mostly, well, with Doug. We would put our own guy into it. We would lease the excavator. Yep. We see excavator, we have shopped around and got pricing on that, so we don't need to do a whole lot more on that. You know, if we subcontract out that excavator and the guy, we got to put it out the bit, which puts us behind.
That truly the grader too, also.
So the grader, I don't think we're going to be able to find a grader and an operator. So the grader would be on us.
Just to rank it.
Yep. So the grader would be our expense, but the thought here is, is that as long as our crew is working on FEMA-related project, FEMA will take care of that. We will get reimbursed by FEMA for the man-hours, the trucks, the materials, all that good stuff. So essentially, you take whatever money you would have been putting into personnel and trucks and gas and you put that towards the grader. Pull skip over, put him in the grader in that we, you know, again, we have to plug in that extra driver someplace.
Dave, is it feasible to be able to even put our hands on a grader at this point?
It is. Yep, there's, so there's two. So there is Cat up in Williston. I forget. I don't know, Gordon, if you remember what... Trying to think of the name. And John Deere. And John Deere out of Springfield, um, you know, so just to give you a little taste, for a month, uh, the one up in Williston, they would drop it off and pick it up. It's eighty-eight hundred bucks, um, and the one out of Springfield is ninety-five hundred bucks. Um, actually goes down, if you keep it for two months, it's fifteen thousand eight hundred for two months. But we're thinking that we need it for four to six weeks, um, and again, the eighty-eight hundred dollars for the grader. Um, we would have spent on labor and other things on our four to five guys during four-week stretch of time. But they'll be involved in the FEMA project. So that's kind of a way to move forward, uh, and do this, um, and to get reimbursed for the work that we're doing on this, except for the grader. The only hiccup in all of this is, of course, we don't get the FEMA funding, funding for, you know, eighteen months.
We've got money in highway.
What's that?
We've got money in highway.
So money in highway, we do, and this is why, Mary, if you recall a conversation about savings accounts and things, I talked about Norwich. And they have a policy on keeping a certain percentage of fund balance. So when they had, you know, this is kind of a hiccup compared to what Norwich experienced, they, they had like multimillion dollar damage. Um, although they had an eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar, you know, savings, you know, that helped bridge the gap. So if we didn't have that surplus in, in highway, we'd be, we'd be second wind, you know, we would literally have to go and get a, you know, a revenue anticipation note to kind of hold us over. As it is, we still have four months, five months to go until our first tax collection day in September, but we think we can, we think we can make it. So it is, um, you know, it's just, I'll admit, I mean, these experiences are just miserable for everybody, you know? Bill, I mean, it's just extra, everything needs to be documented, everything needs to be, pictures taken, we need to actually physically, um, measure the areas, um, that we put material in. Um, you know, it needs to be documented with, um, the, what's it called, the, the satellite numbers as to where the location is and all this, that. And people's hours and where they're going and this, that and everything else, so it's not a pleasant experience, but, I mean, it is reimbursement for storm damage. We do seem to be, this, again, I put in my email, this is my second one in twenty-two months that I've been here. Uh, this is our second one and our third event, and we're always good for a storm that we have significant amount of blowdowns on. So you can see how last time, the July first storm, two thousand seventeen, we trucked through it, we kind of put our heads down and we did it. But we were significantly behind, and I think we're still behind from it. Um, we didn't do any paving that year. Um, you know, it took us, I don't know for how long to kind of fix that down hill that had some crevasses coming down and stuff like that, so. This is kind of a way to, you know, and at that point in time, I think I said, you know, we were slow to realize the need for help. Um, you know, this isn't quite coloring out the cavalry, but I think it's a way to start to get the roads because, you know, if you look at these pictures, you know, that's damage that needs to be addressed. But if you go around town and drive on, trying to think where I was today, but there are, you know, it's spring. And we had started to make some progress with our spring grading, but it came to an abrupt halt and.
Sure. Well, I think what you're saying, Dave, is this storm really impacted all the roads? Cause you had, you had done some grading, a lot of fill, and a number of the roads were really in good shape for this time of the year. And, and, you know, I'm just thinking of the roads around, at the hill there, I mean, I just, I went home to get the truck the other day, just because I wasn't sure if I could get through. But the point is, is that it set us back immensely on these roads, but it also set us back on the other roads. My assessment of Hartland Hill Rogers is that the mud came kind of late after we thought maybe it wasn't going to get somebody. And I, I can't remember a year recently when it is as bad as it is right now. Let's approach it again. If you decided to go to Woodstock by way of Hartland Hill, you would regret it. And it's just awful and it, and it's not hard enough to grade. I mean, it's all.
Hartland Hill is not, um, although the, the other places, the, the lower elevations have dried up quicker than, than, you know, the Hartland Hills. You know, it's kind of, Hartland's a little tough in that respect, so like the, the cream pots, the garbins, the Hartland Hills, um, you know, stayed, you know. Denzmore may even still have some frozen spots, I don't know, but, um, you know, that area in there is just, um, you know, it stays.
Well, I'm sure this is still frozen.
Forever.
Underneath some of the shaded places, you know?
So that's, you know, really, you know, as it is, I still think we're cutting it a little lean, but, you know, I say that we, you know, take the, you know. We won't need the excavator for a little bit. We have other cleanup work to do.
But you're going to use that to install some culverts?
We're going to, yeah, because actually, and we had the stream alteration guy with us. Um, but so for instance, in a couple of the places, particularly on Advent, where you've got silt or, or other factors that have kind of, you know, the, the. The, the, the area where the water seems to have found its way down at this point is not necessarily kind of the, the natural stream part of it. So we're probably going to dig a little bit uphill to get the flow back into the area that the culvert should be. And the backhoe is just way kind of too small, plus, you know, we talked about it a little bit, but, um, you know, some of those places, it's just going to be easier to trench it with the back, with the back, with the excavator. And lay down the pipe and be done with it.
You want the state letters going to the stream?
He was with us today.
That's what I, that's what I thought.
He was right there. He was right there with us. Well, so for instance, the one by the donkey farm, um, is what I'm going to call it, so there's, you know, hit, you know. And reasons that we need to do some of the things that we should do, that we maybe have gotten away from. So it's kind of a low area with, you know, hill on both sides, and you can see where the sediment has just accumulated in certain spots in this wetland area. So we're almost actually getting back in and we're going to trench a little bit more of a natural flow of it. Whereas the sediment from the road actually has pushed it a little bit away from wearing.
You're saying, you know, whether the culvert has created the delta of.
The inlet, actually. The inlet side of it. So it's not the culvert that's creating it, it's, it's, it's material. Material washing.
Coming down the road.
Rain events such like this, getting pushed down the road and finding its way into this low area where the water kind of comes.
I'm not saying it's too cold for a lot anyways, but I'm thinking of another problem that sometimes happens is the outlet of the culvert and its material.
Yep.
Makes its way through the culvert.
Yep.
And it slows down, and then it tends to dam up and, and, and plug the culvert from the bottom in.
So think of almost the same situation, but it's coming down, the, instead of coming, instead of being pushed out the culvert, the, the, the gravity of the road is kind of, and the, and the water running down the road is pushing it. From both sides kind of into this wetland area and it's kind of, it's kind of, and then it kind of flattens and then kind of finds its way. And now the water, instead of coming straight down, kind of goes this way and a little bit that way. So it's, um, that's just one of them, but, um, there's a couple of different areas. It's, it becomes pretty apparent when you sit there and kind of look at it.
So we had plans for culverts for the summer, so that sounds like we're setting aside for now and maybe, maybe we'll catch to them.
So we still have a project going on this spring that, um, that we, on Mace Hill, we're going to be doing ditching and, um, and some, some culvert replacement, three or four of those. But, um, we will add these, I don't think we really have figured out what we were going to do for culvert replacement after that. Um, again, it kind of coincides with the hydro connected areas, but, um, you know, obviously. You know, these are an issue. These, these failed or were undersized or weren't serviced the way they should have been. So we're there, we're touched, we'll feel it, uh, might as well replace it and get us, you know, those six will be done, so.
We have a driveway, a bit. But we also have driveway is that, you know, part of this Ellison road piece just down from it is a driveway that washed out. Bringing the volume on tels and threefold and then also all sorts of sediment. Would it help us at that point as far as the land on this driveway affecting the town road and culverts?
For the most part, yes. So some of this comes to, you know, permit, you know, driveway permits and, you know, follow-up and, and design of the driveway. And how this is going to flow onto the road and, um, you know, so there is that. And then plus, I think that personally, I think we have probably a fair amount of development that we don't see a driveway permit for.
How's responsible for culvert, I think, just put in the ditch so someone could get to their house?
So the property owner is responsible for their driveway culvert and their driveway. So if they're not unplugging it, it may create an issue for the person downstream.
So those happen all the time.
Um, there are some instances that we will simply, if we're there or it's just enough of an issue to the surrounding neighborhood. Hartland Hill was an example, we just went in and swapped it out for a bigger one. Um, didn't ask, didn't, you know, we just went in, I'm sure she was pretty thankful that we did it, but, um, we just swapped it out because of the, the damage done downstream. We were there, FEMA had covered it, um, so we swapped it out. So there are instances where we will kind of take it into our own hands, but, um, you know, otherwise, you know. The several hundred that we have already that don't belong to property owners, um, are very difficult to maintain. So if you were to add, you know, we've got fifteen hundred parcels in town, so if we add another fifteen hundred culverts to our inventory that we were responsible for, you know, start doing the math. So that's kind of why that split is.
It's understandable, though, if it's a real problem for a homeowner to maintain a culvert, depending on who they are. But, uh, it's, it's not necessarily an easy thing. They don't, now fifteen hundred have a culvert. Thank goodness, fourteen ninety-nine.
Those wires tracks of trees don't, even the hayfields tend to have some sort of an entrance and exit and generally don't have a culvert. Um, this is, uh, we are expecting this to be declared a FEMA event. I think that, um, you know, based upon that, you know, we're looking to take this step and try and keep the boat from capsizing per se. The math, you know, without getting down and doing the pennies to pennies, you know, seems to, one for the other. You know, it's a matter of, okay, our guys do that, we lease this and utilize that. You know, is a wash, it's just that the, the, the revenue received is, it's after the fact. I mean, one example is the twenty-five thousand dollar, thirty-five thousand, can't remember, thirty. Anyway, that's sixty, I take that back, that we received for, um, Jennyville Road from Hurricane Irene came in this year. You know, um, that just didn't quite have the follow-up by us or the state for that matter, um, just kind of fell through the cracks. But, um, I would expect, this isn't quite as extravagant as the July first storm. That took maybe eighteen months to get that money, um, seems about right.
I do worry about the politics. And are you, is the state pretty confident that this will go through at the federal level?
Um, my understanding is, is that Vermont has a one million dollar threshold. My understanding is, is Wyndham County hit that or has hit its threshold. Um, I don't believe that he has the ability to deviate from that.
Okay, that's good.
And, um, I don't think him and Governor Scott are at odds, so, um, you know, I, I think that the governor was actually. Not in favor of something in the last time around and, uh, we still got the funding, so, I mean, even California got its wildfire. Wild, wild fire.
Okay, that's good. I, um, I think I mentioned to you, Dave, I saw you Friday afternoon. I drove up to Rochester Friday morning and then up to, through Hancock and up to Warren. And the state roads are, got hammered, one oh seven, one hundred. Um, do you think any of that is going to affect our local paving job starting May? Have you heard from Pike? Or, you know, are they going to be dragged across the state now as an emergency?
I hope not, um, you never know. Um, hopefully Pike just puts more guys on or something to that effect. Um, I actually haven't heard on that.
And just given all the load that will, extra load will have, um, would we be ready to have Pike come?
Uh, we hope, um, I think that we're, I mean, they're going to do the ditching, um, they're going to do most of the paving. We have to put down, uh, material on the shoulders after the fact, but I think that, um, you know, I think that we're somewhat ready for that. I mean, obviously this doesn't help, you know, this is just one, you know, I'll be honest, if, if it got delayed a six weeks, if it was guaranteed six weeks, I'd probably say, you know what, that's okay. But, you know, delays don't go six weeks, they go from six to a year, you know, so I would prefer to keep that, but, um. You know, it's not, anything at this point isn't really opportune, but I'm just kind of dealing with it.
Other thing that comes to mind for me is that the guys, right down at the town road, it's about three o'clock, is it?
Three, three fifteen.
Yeah. Now, what about some overtime?
Uh, well, I talked about overtime, they seem to be willing to do some overtime at this point in time. I think it's a matter of, you know, I think we kind of got to take the step and see, you know, how this goes. So, yeah, I think that, um, my understanding is, is they're willing to put in the ten-hour days, um, I believe, and we have to double check with FEMA. I believe overtime is part of the reimbursement, uh, as long as we track it. So I think that, um, yeah, we'd be, we would need to probably look at doing that and put some in.
You raised a yellow flag before saying that FEMA had clear-cut requirements from measuring, um, the size of the, of, of the hole in the road photographing. Does Bill need support for that and is there anything that we can help orchestrate a change and support you to make sure that we get all the paperwork done correctly?
So I think that the simple message from me would be, you know, it kind of ties into my last, our last meeting, you know, I think it just simply. into my last, our last meeting, you know, I think it just simply, you know, when something goes wrong and pulls the ship, you know, I, I think that, you know, I, I'll be honest, you know, to have, you know, I think I'm outlining, you know, what would resemble an assistant position, I don't think I need somebody to dictate notes for me, but I think I've identified a good number of things that would take things off of my plate and put it on somebody else's, including maybe a little bit more oversight on the driveway permits. That would free me up a little bit more to concentrate on some of this when something does happen. Ultimately, I guess I'll just say it, I think that, you know, the next step down the road would be, you know, I, I kind of put it out there that maybe we can do a lot of this with subcontracting work. I do think one extra highway person would probably be beneficial. I think that, you know, we don't seem to be going the other way, you know, we don't seem to be getting nice, dry weather. You know, we're coming off a horrendous winter, you know, we're having a horrendous spring, we had a bad fall, we had a storm event last July. You know, it's cyclical, you know, but I think that, you know, talk about nineteen fifty-eight, you know, I think we've had five guys since nineteen fifty-eight, you know, along with a select board title, select men title. And the fact that we did the minutes first on the agenda, you know, yet, you know, and Hiram did go over and help the highway crew, and Bob backed off that a little bit, and I'm kind of looked at the position, you know, concentrating on kind of the overall picture. But, you know, you got more cars, you got more traffic, we got more issues, we got more oversight from the state, and more statutory obligations to fulfill. So I think that, you know, at some point in time, that would be the next step in where we're going. You know, again, looking at the materials that we're using and up that a little bit, and then I would say then, I think we've gotten to a place of much more comfort, rather than trying to react, or, you know, literally things, you know, sitting on our plate as we kind of, you know, deal with some of the things that kind of come up, you know.
Sounds like if you can get John Dumas, that would be really good, if you can't, possibly you should try to find someone else.
Yeah, I don't know what that looks like yet, but, you know, I think that, you know, I think that we need two trucks bringing material out to, you know, Doug's in the grader working on the, in the storm event stuff, two trucks would be beneficial, and, you know, we'll twiddle our thumbs with just one truck, it's just not moving material quick enough.
More than ten minutes.
Wishful thinking.
Is it broken, the car?
I took it, you know.
It's on the chin there.
I tried to, I tried to change it, I tried to, you know, move it forward, because, I don't know, it's stuck on like five clocks, just wrong.
Electronic clock?
Yeah, it's supposed to be...
Sets itself.
Yeah.
Well, somehow it, I came in this today, and it was not right.
Thank you, Greg.
I, maybe the satellite fell on this guy, I don't know, it's electronic.
Storms in Denver really are telling the clock to stop.
I, you know, I don't...
I don't know. I don't have anything else.
The year two thousand bike, a little bit late, you know, a little after the fact.
I lost gears on that one. I just forgot overtime on that one. No, I, I guess just, I hope the morale keeps up with the shop, and, you know, that they took this week, and there's a lot of work out there, so please pass a little, thank you. I'm impressed when you see your work wash away.
Yes.
That's a frustrating piece, I just, just... I was, one general thing, Bob Stacy sent us that, the word of the raid.
No, he sent it, did you?
Well, we, we had it in our packets.
Yeah, so you gotta understand how my, how they set me up when I came on, so that, that comes into, so the Vermont data, it came from Vermont Digger, so that comes into Bob's old email address that gets sent to me. When it pops up, I magically think it's my email, so when I forward it, I think it's from me, but it's Bob's old email address, so it came from...
So it's the same thing we saw with that?
Yeah, no, it was actually different, it was an updated, it was a little bit of an updated story.
It's kind of a pressure back.
Yeah.
That's very, very good, really good thing to read.
Yeah.
I didn't stand why they did that.